So we have a quorum, so I'll call this study session to Lakewood City Council for Monday, June 24th order. First item of business is a joint meeting with the Public Safety Advisory Committee. And I see a couple of members here. So.
You're in.
You're in. Mr. Hart.
Okay, so our accomplishments for the year was a discussion of a popular topic as it is with the city council, railroad crossing safety. We discussed if additional signage was desirable or would it just confuse the issue. After discussing it with the police, we concluded that additional signage probably would not help the situation. We also had a conversation with the Lakewood Traffic Safety or Traffic Department. And one of our major concerns was the crossings, particularly at Clover Creek where there is no sidewalk and people, there are some handicapped people who have motorized wheelchairs. They actually have to go out into the street or cross that. That was a concern. The best we could do was to get Traffic Engineer to agree to, when he could, to put as much pressure as he could on DOT to recognize, both recognize and rectify that situation. Although he wasn't hopeful about influencing DOT. We talked about, did talk about traffic safety. We had the Public Works Engineers report on the streets, sidewalks, and lighting. We brought to their attention several locations of concern that we had. One popular item of concern was intersection of Bridgeport and High Five. Unfortunately Lakewood does not control the, those lights. So again, it's a situation where we're at the mercy of the state DOT. And while they can offer advice and suggestions, state DOT actually controls those signals. And we've also reviewed their plans for the future and continuing improvement. We, last year at city council, there was an issue raised about questions about safety in our park systems. Mary Dodsworth was kind enough to come and talk with us about the issue. Chief Zaro reviewed the calls for service that police have received. And actually, there are very few calls for service, surprisingly few. The police now have a program of us occasionally clearing the parks after hours, randomly hitting the parks late night, early morning, where, when the parks should be unoccupied and helping people, encouraging people to leave who should not be in the parks. We think that will also improve the public's perception of the parks and decrease, we hope, decrease vandalism. The big issues were, we started talking about fireworks. We are reviewing those issues. Chief Zaro is going to be doing a survey both of Tacoma and University Place as well as using the drone over Lakewood on 4th of July to try to understand what is the distribution of fireworks in the, in the area. And he wants to look at Tacoma and University Place to find out how, how effective is there enforcement? Is this an enforceable issue or just an issue that we have to keep working on? We have received some data, limited data, from both the West Pierce Fire Department and LPD's Animal Control. And we'll be receiving more information from them after this 4th of July. We're also, through Chief Zaro, requested information from St. Clair on their experience as far as fireworks-related injuries. What kind of visits do they have to the emergency rooms that night? Doing that, we, we hope to get a, define a picture, how extensive is it in Lakewood? And is it a, a public health problem to injuries? Is it enforceable? And what kind of experience do our neighboring jurisdiction like University Place, which has a new ban, a new program banning some fireworks, and Tacoma? What is their experience and how would they, what suggestions do they have? We hope to make a recommendation within a couple of months, assuming we can get all the information together. We also got some information on the ownership of the fireworks stands, owners, operators of fireworks stands from West Pierce Fire. And it turns out that actually there are fairly few public charitable organizations or nonprofit organizations that run stands. The number appears to be declining. This is only up to 2018, we're waiting, I'll be interested in 2019 to see what it is. The number of stands has also declined somewhat over the years. So we'll be looking at that issue and would like to get a recommendation out for, so at least our, results of our discussions and information we've gathered out to the council in the next couple of months. We have spent time on and off over the past year talking about adult family homes. We're trying to keep in touch with what is really going on and particularly the number of calls for service to the police and fire departments. It appears that there are a very limited number of homes that have the majority of the calls, at least from the fire department. And the fire department is also in a process of educating the legislature, trying to get some legislation that might give us a little bit more of a handle on doing something about putting pressure on the adult family homes. Again, that's going to be work in progress and we'll be talking with West Pierce Fire more about what kind of legislation they would really like to see and if there is a role for us and through us for the city council to work on that issue, support that issue, if we can define it. We've completed the open meetings, training for all of our members. And we've also, the youth council brought up a subject about youth shoplifting that we spent an evening talking about. And we've charged the members of the council to provide more information about that issue and what, what is their concerns are and how can we work with them. For the future, I guess our number one issue is fireworks. We, we'll report to the council on that and adult family homes, any suggestions we, we can come up with that will help us in that regard. Also, we're, we've got three other issues that are, have been brought up at various times. One is regarding the, the police are going to be doing a special emphasis program on speeding in Lakewood. And we're going to be looking at that to find out how effective that is. If that is very effective, we'd like to propose to the police chief some other ideas on aggressive driving and some other difficult to control issues where officers can stop people and give them educational lectures. Another issue that recently came up are e-scooters. Tacoma seems to be going into the e-scooter market. Do we need to think about that and be prepared for the eventuality of it moving in our direction? Is this an issue that we even need to worry about yet or is it going to be far enough in the future we can drag our feet on it? And finally, the other issue that has come to the committee is concerning landscaping. We have several corners or intersections in the city and streets that landscaping seems to be encroaching upon visibility and creating a hazardous situation. We're going to be talking with the appropriate Public Works people to find out, is there anything we can do about it and how they perceive the problem? And that is our report.
Questions for the committee? Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did you have the name of the streets where they're approaching, I mean, the blockage has been hap, is happening that, you were talking about the landscaping. What streets were you referring to?
I couldn't hear you.
You, you were saying that there was some blockage of the vision for the streets? Which streets did you say that was?
We didn't define the streets. There are, there are some, just a general con, some general comments came our way. So we'd like to define that issue. We're going to have to define it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Rensseder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only, my comment is that I'm, you know, that I'm, that I'm glad that the youth council brought some concerns and issues to them. I mean, one of our main hopes for the youth council is that they will raise issues that are of concern to young people to do that. Unfortunately, the youth council reconstitutes every new school year and is, so there isn't, it's, it's, it's kind of in that window where they're, they're not there. And so I guess I would tell you that in September with the, the new youth council, that you may want to pose the, the shoplifting concern to them and, and maybe create an expectation of by which month next year you'd like to see some feedback. Youth council tends to be responsive to that, that they're, that they like to be involved and to, and to ask to be involved if you do it in a meaningful way. But you, you shouldn't assume that the youth council representatives that you spoke with this year are, are, will remain in place or will be advocating that back to the, to the whole council to be able to go and do that. Because certainly if you come up with a viable issue along with something that has an, has, has an education or training element to it, we're hoping the youth council will do another youth summit next spring. And if this rises to the level of an issue that they'd like to incorporate in it and you could assist with that, that would be, you know, something that would be of a service to the community.
Ms. Bart.
Mr. Rensseder, to answer your question about the youth council, the two liaison representatives this year are, were juniors this year. They'll be seniors next year and they have told us that they are coming back. They enjoy this council immensely, so, yeah, I'll share with you. Very charming young individuals, very vibrant and not afraid to speak their mind, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, they, they come up with some pretty good.
They were, they were more engaged than I've experienced in the past. These two were, were very engaged, which is a good thing and brought subjects up, so that's a good thing. So that's why we jumped on it when they were interested, they were obviously concerned, so they, they have an issue then. It'd be a good, good experience for them.
So you, you had some numbers with respect to fireworks stands. Could you tell us how many stands there are and how many of those are nonprofit or were last year?
This is last year, there were twelve, according to this list, there were twelve stands. Let's see, how many are, hmm, I don't see any here that they're, they have, there's Lakewood, two churches, Lakewood Baptist Temple and then a Methodist Church and Lakewood UPC, Oasis Church.
Four, four churches.
Yeah. I can, I can have coffee, please.
That's fine. Any other questions? Any guidance that you'd like to ask us for?
Well, just get us some members.
Members.
Yeah, we seem to, are at a low spot in our volunteer activities. We're not getting active members.
Put out another notice? That are currently noticed? Okay. So it's out, yeah?
Yeah, it's, it's gone out. We're, we're actively very interested in getting active members.
Okay, great.
I guess one thing I'd like to say is I know that you guys have more interaction with residents than we do and safety issues come up. And I wonder if there's not some safety issues that could be passed on to us for us to look into. I did notice in the suburban times of the day, they, there was a bunch of wires stole off some lights over by OHOP, I think it was. And they were going to replace it. And I just kind of thought, you know, that's an issue that maybe we should follow up on to see that, that that gets repaired to satisfaction of the residents. There may be some issues like that that come up that we could follow up just to make sure that they get taken care of properly and the residents are happy.
Do you have any thoughts on other issues? I guess the fact that we don't have people clamoring to be on the board and the fact that we have a limited number of issues is a good thing because that wasn't the situation when we incorporated 23 years ago, so.
Yeah, we've been a bit too successful. The city is very safe. People feel safe, so they don't really.
Right, well, thank, thank you for your continued service and, and don't abandon us until we get some more members, okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So next item for discussion is the Emergency Management Services update with Ms. Kelly Fong.
I was just saying this might be a little awkward on our part, sorry. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Assistant Chief John Unfred and I are here tonight to talk about expanding West Pierce Fire and Rescue's Emergency Management Services to include University Place and Silicon. So as you know, the city of Lakewood receives its emergency management services from West Pierce, which I will now call the district from now on. And it includes one emergency management coordinator. And their duties are to update our comprehensive emergency management plan, to coordinate trainings, and also provide other services. The city of University Place and the town of Silicon both get emergency management services from Pierce County and they are considered service islands. So the city of Tacoma to the north has its own emergency management services and then the city of Lakewood has its own emergency managements, or not its own, but through the So the city receives Emergency Management Performance Grant awards. It's gone, it's through the state, it's from the federal government, it goes to the state and then it gets distributed to the counties, towns, and cities. The district cannot receive the EMPG grants. The EMPG grants have declined over, precipitously over the last couple of years. Back in, when they, 2012, the city received almost $80,000 and now currently it's around Given this drop in the EMPG grant funding, in a future iteration of the ILA between the district and the city, they have decided to split the remaining costs after the EMPG grant funds are used. University Place, as I already mentioned, gets their emergency management services from Pierce County and they pay on a per capita rate. So as you can see, in 2015, their per capita, 14 I should say, their per capita rate is 85 cents and then it increases with the CIP. So it's estimated now in 2012, 20, that it'll be around 96 cents per person. So looking at the period of July 1st, 2019 to June 31st, 2020, University Place is going to compensate Pierce County an estimated of around $32,000. Silicon is exactly the same. They contract through the county and they also pay a per capita rate. And it's estimated for that same period of time that they're going to compensate Pierce County for these services at around $7,000. So expanding the services to include Silicon and University Place would provide a greater uniformity of services across the area. We would have one comprehensive emergency management plan. It would provide the best emergency management services. You, again, you'd have that continuity. You, again, you'd have that continuity. You'd have increased efficiencies. And you would have improved local control of emergency management services for University Place and Silicon. So we did analysis to see what expanding Emergency Management Services to University Place and Silicon would do. And what we did was we added those jurisdictions and we made it so that they also received Emergency Management Performance Grants, which they would be eligible for. And then had the remaining costs apportioned between the jurisdiction would cover 40% and then the rest of the cities and town would cover the remaining 60% based on their population. So for Lakewood, this would be 36% of that remaining 60%. For University Place, 20% and for Silicon, 4%. And the City looked at four different options and the options here are located on the right-hand side. Option one would be to add no additional emergency management personnel. As I said earlier in the presentation, there is currently one full-time emergency manager coordinator. Option two was adding a .25 emergency management assistant. Option three, a .33 emergency management assistant. And then option four, a half-time emergency management assistant. The recommendation moving forward would be option two, which was adding the .25. And this would be on an interim basis, again, given that the comprehensive plans would be for all three jurisdictions. And if there is a need in the future for additional personnel to make a decision later on. So again, the jurisdictions would apply their EMPG grants, as I just mentioned, and then they would cover the remaining amount after that based on their population. And so it would be the remaining 60% of the remaining costs. So if you, if you look at the table here, Table H, it shows the population and the breakdown and how we determined what percent of that remaining cost each jurisdiction would have. Option two, as well as all of the rest of the options, would bring down Emergency Management Service costs for all jurisdictions. And you can see here, top, Table L, shows you what the personnel cost would be for the Emergency Management Coordinator as well as the added .25 Emergency Management Assistant. And then Table M shows what each jurisdiction and entity would be paying for those positions after the Emergency Management Grants. And then Table N on the bottom shows what if, if there were no changes. So if Lakewood was to continue as the only person receiving Emergency Management Services from the District and if University Place and Silicon were to continue receiving services from Pierce County and then the delta between the change to receiving services from the District. And these slides just show you the other options. And this is just to show that in all of the options, it would reduce costs for all jurisdictions and the District. So on the left-hand side, you have option one, which is add no personnel. And then a repeat of option two, which is the .25. And option three, which is the .33. And then option four, which is the half-time Emergency Management Assistant. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Kelly Fong. Mr. Bulkey?
So, thank you for the presentation. So, but help me out here. We currently have one person on Emergency Management or? I'm trying to think what our baseline is here in the city right now. When you said earlier, there's one?
So the District has one full-time Emergency Management Coordinator. But I know that city personnel also work to some degree in Emergency Management Services.
So what the proposal would do is add a quarter to the one?
Correct.
Okay, so what does a quarter person do? That's 10 hours a week. So where would that person, who would work 10 hours a week?
So John might be better to answer this question. But from my understanding, there's a lot of updates that would need to occur with the comprehensive emergency management plans of University Place and Silicon to, to make them on par with what we currently have.
Yeah, and really with the, a quarter time you're writing, it's not a lot of time, but it's mainly administrative time that will make it more efficient for myself and Christine, the Emergency Management Coordinator from West Pierce. Because they can pick up a lot of the paperwork, the grunt work. Some of the community outreach takes a lot of pamphlets and flyers, social media work, that kind of stuff. There's, emergency management is an emerging field, so there's lots of interns and young folks that are just trying to get some part-time work, get some experience. So we're pretty confident that we can find somebody to fill that little niche. It's not a lot, but it will help us out in the end.
And, and DuPont wasn't included because they're not part of West Pierce?
Correct. Yeah, they don't fall under West Pierce, so little bites of the apple. That may be something down the road. But all three of these cities and towns fall under West Pierce, so it's a, it's an easier agreement.
Okay, because I was thinking the really last big emergency we had, of course, was the train, which is on its way again. And that was a DuPont thing, really. It was all hands on deck, but it would have probably been helpful to be under, but that's their business, okay?
Big picture, that's what we're looking at, is this really is an island. Tacoma is, is a large city. They have their own program. Then you had I-5 and Apugia Sound, and so you've got kind of the four of us left. So, yeah, that's what we're trying to maximize.
So just for my edification, what? I mean, I think we have, I, I, maybe if all seven of us were polled, we'd give you different ideas of what Emergency Management is or what. I mean, we immediately, this field really took off after 9/11, so we, terrorist events. When you really spend, what do you spend most of your time on? Is it, like she just mentioned, earthquakes or is it, I mean, what, what? What is really the crux of Emergency Management? What, what's the big expectation here?
I think a lot of people confuse Emergency Management with Incident Management. And I do a lot of the incident management work, you know, throughout the county, going to the train wrecks, the hurricanes and that kind of stuff. That's Incident Management. Emergency Management is really the preparation that takes before that. So the mitigation, the, the education, preparation, preparing the public. And that really starts with your hazard and threat assessment. Which for us, in Lakewood, you know, we don't have a lot of really natural threats. We're high enough. We're not gonna get the Lahar. We're not gonna get flooding. We don't have a lot of industry. So really earthquake is probably our number one. The volcano will certainly impact us. And then, as I always say, we're a destination spot for the rest of the county. And because we are high and dry and we have enough infrastructure, so then we become a go-to place to shelter, for instance. So that's what we kind of prepare for. So the Emergency Management is really all the work leading up to an event. And then it's also, you know, covers the actual incident response that blends in. But, so there's a lot of work to be done beforehand, preparing communities for a disaster.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Brensitter?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. One of the advantages that you cited in your report was greater uniformity. And, you know, you know, first of all, I would think that since they're under Pierce County, University Place and Silicon have some uniformity with each other. What is the lack of uniformity, you know, what is, that, that currently exists that we're trying to improve?
Really, I don't think that the county plans focused a whole lot on either University Place or Silicon, to be perfectly honest. Silicon is a very small, I mean, in the county's grand scheme of things, Silicon, you know, is very, very small population residential community. University Place is a whole lot bigger. So they just kind of get followed, swallowed up by the county plan. Whereas we've done our own planning. And so if, if a large event hits and the county is overwhelmed, you know, realistically, we're gonna end up helping University Place and Silicon. Just because the county is gonna be overwhelmed. And so we're, we're just taking that realistic look and getting them on the same page as us, so. And there's some economies of scale that if we plan now and we come together with all three of our jurisdictions and the resources that we have here, then we don't have to worry about stuff that's cut off by I-5 or, you know, the water. We can take care of ourselves in this little island.
So from the, from Lakewood's perspective, you know, we would be able to be able to sort of expand the geographic area that we're able to proactively prepare for and being, being able to go and do that. And, and you think that, that there's, that University Place and Silicon feel that they're, don't get as much focus on preparation from Pierce County as they need? Or that would be best for them? Is that, I mean, I guess, what, what's the? Uniformities talked about, it seems, it seemed that there would be, if there's a lack of uniformity between us and them, is it, is it just because things are going through the county or are there some, some real structural differences between the way that we do emergency management in Lakewood and the county's approach?
I don't think there's a lot of differences. We have the same basic planning structure. It's more being able to identify resources that we have here and access and share those. Whatever resources that Silicon, Public Works has and University Place and us, and we can share those. Everybody, any emergency management organization has to develop a comprehensive emergency management plan. So our plan looks very, very similar to the county plan. But now it would actually be more specific and more localized. So it's not that we're in conflict with what the county plan or we're that much different. But we would have one plan for a bigger area under this proposal.
In the draft agreement, there's a section in there that speaks to developing and coordinating a local joint information center for the three jurisdictions. What would that look like? Or, and how is that different from what we now have just as Lakewood?
So the Joint Information Center is where we coordinate public messaging. And that is a subsection of the Emergency Operations Center. So that's a function of the Emergency Operations Center. So if there were a large event, we would activate our EOC and then the JIC would be out of that. Doing it combined with all three jurisdictions, we now don't have to set up three different Emergency Operations Centers and three JICs and coordinate those. We would just have one with everybody in the same room and, and one Emergency Operations Center.
Okay, so although it's not mentioned in the agreement that there'd be only one Emergency Operations Center, that's really the vision of the professionals in this realm?
I, I mean, it's, obviously, it's gotta be palatable to the individual jurisdictions. So, you know, there's a balance there between everybody wants their own local control. So there's a couple of options and that's kind of down on the operational level that we would have to figure out if this agreement is, is signed off by everybody. Couple of options make immediate sense. One is a, a single EOC for all three. Lakewood makes the most sense because we're centrally located. We have the largest facility. It's the most robust. The other option would be, you know, a University Place EOC, because they already have one. And then a Lakewood-Silicon EOC, and then we could share. And then depending on where, you know, may not be a large earthquake. It could be a train or truck spill or something along that lines. And then if it happens in UP, we can act, you know, if it impacts their EOC, we can open up here. We've got an alternate site that we can bounce back and forth. Currently, our alternate site is in Piala, so it gives us a much more local site here.
And apparently the, the key to funding this is the EMPG awards. And, you know, ours has been going down and Silicon and University Places have been non-existent. So is that because they've chosen to not accept them and that their money that would have gone to them is going to the county? I mean, is there a, is, 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 is this a zero sum between University Place and Silicon and the county of some money that's coming from the state?
So Silicon and University Place technically have been getting their share of the EMPG, but it just goes straight to the county since the county is providing them the service. And so that's part of this whole equation is we would then get that EMPG money and put it from UP and Silicon and put it towards us. In the last three or four years, it's leveled out. It's, it's gone down. And actually, it's going up very, very slightly next year in our 2019 award. But the difference in the last few years has been $200, $300 or so in the award amount.
Okay, so the, the July 1 timeline is a week from now. That, what, what's the realistic timeline of getting an agreement and them actually, actually getting funding? Whereas, you know, they have funding that's going to the county. I mean, so what are we really talking about in terms of a, of, of, of a timeline when, when we could actually do this agreement and the funding and things could be in place that we would do this? Is this more realistically a January 1 start date or how does you envision that?
We'll have more information on a potential timeline here shortly.
And I, I guess that I'm, I'm, I'm certainly think that there's, there's some both physical and operational efficiencies in, 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 in pursuing this as long as it becomes a, a win-win-win on part of all three jurisdictions and, and the public. And so, you know, I'd like to see it be sooner than later, but that it's all kind of dependent upon when can you get the funds to flow?
The EMPG grant cycle starts July 1st, so I think that's where that came from. Realistically, you're right. I think first of the year probably would be realistic. And then at that point, we'd have to look at prorating funds and switching them over from the county into the new district.
And has the county voiced an opinion on this plan or an ask?
This has not been formally presented to the county.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is very good work, Chief and Kelly. I like this. I take your reasoning on option two. But I, I just have one question. You said that emergency management field is an emerging field, if I understood you correctly, Chief. Given that, why wouldn't we go with option four? And what's catching my, my mind's eye here is the .50 FTE. Why wouldn't we put someone in place halftime because we know we're gonna grow into that? That's my question.
I'd be more than willing to take a halftime. I will not turn that down.
All right, so I want to know why we're with option two.
Option two was recommended based off of the District's understanding of what it would take to bring in the comprehensive emergency management plans of University Place and Silicon in the first year.
I, I understand and I figured that'd be your answer, Kelly, but I, I, you know, I'm not, I don't have a dog in this fight either way. I think this is a great plan and I, I favor it. But I would give a little thought to option four. Because half of you has already said you'd take the help and I suspect that help would be put to work relatively quickly. So it's just, just a suggestion or a thought to consider. Thank you.
What else? I have an unrelated EMS question. You know, we have access to the GET system of prioritization of cell phone
You know, we have access to the GET system of prioritization of cellphone usage in the time of their, of essentially an electronic flood of the assets. Have, we looked at the new first, relatively new FirstNet system, and it seems more geared for recovery and their ability to deploy assets after the fact. So if the towers go down, that there is a broadband communication system for the reorganization rebuild period of time?
Yeah, I've been watching the development of FirstNet since they first Congress auctioned off the, the bandwidth. And for those who aren't familiar, there was a certain amount of bandwidth left over, and obviously, that's very valuable real estate. And so the F C C set that aside and with the intent of creating a first responder network. A T and T did for that. With that, they got the spectrum, but in return, they had to build out this network for first responders throughout the country. Largely, that involves increasing cellular coverage in rural areas, but it also is a lot of infrastructure and then a lot of disaster response of being able to come in with trucks and, and set up cellular towers. Currently, we use Verizon, and so before we make the jump to FirstNet, I want to see how, because Washington just signed on about to FirstNet about a year, year and a half ago. I want to see how it got built out a little bit before jumping on that bandwagon. Verizon did not bid for FirstNet at all. And I talked to our Verizon rep, and he said the reasoning was they felt they could compete with A T and T with what they currently have, even though A T and T got the extra spectrum. So currently, Verizon does have similar response vehicles that will come and set up towers and, and bring service back, particularly for first responders. We still get the priority through them. We're pretty close. We had a presentation about a month ago from a T and T rep about FirstNet, and I know Piala just switched to them, and so we're taking a really hard look at that. And I think that, you know, that may happen here, you know, shortly.
One of the things they're discussing, kind of not too far over the horizon, is drones. It's like having the sustained drone as the transmitting source. So, so it's, you know, and if you can think about it, it can probably happen. Yes. I thought it was pretty interesting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. We won't have to put them on any light poles. But there's this buzz all of a sudden. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the update, and we'll see what comes. Thanks. Don't go very far, Ms. Kelly Huang.
I'm just going to go right here, so it's a little easier for me to actually see the screen that I'm reading from.
The next, the next item is review of illegal dumping prevention and enforcement.
Well, good evening again, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to talk about illegal dumping. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to overview illegal dumping, to review the current illegal dumping activity that's occurring here in the city, and also to look at potential options available to the city that would augment existing efforts to prevent illegal dumping. So some of this is building off of what's already there, and some of this would be looking into new things. So illegal dumping essentially is the dumping of any waste in a public or private space where that waste shouldn't be. There's a lot of other names for it, and what's commonly dumped are solid wastes and white goods, which are the appliances. And we'll take a look at what we are finding here in the city of Lakewood using my three, my Lakewood three-one-one data here in a second. Importantly, illegal dumping negatively impacts communities, taxpayers, and legitimate businesses. And some of the reasons that it does that is health and safety issues. So it causes a lot of hazards, direct and indirect. As you can see here, some examples are providing habitat for disease-carrying vectors, as well as creating fire hazards, combustion hazards, you know, dangerous traffic hazards, et cetera. It also has a social and economic impact, so it decreases social capital. It decreases property values. It also, in areas where you find a lot of dumping, promotes more dumping. It creates substandard living conditions. And finally, it, it drives up costs. It's not a cost-free crime. Taxpayers' monies are required for the cleanup. So this is a very kind of basic analysis here, but this is just looking at city personnel based on the number of cleanups that they responded to in 2017, and it's almost $20,000 in just personnel resources alone. I can't stress that enough. This does not include other city resources that would be required, such as, you know, vehicle maintenance, gas, dumping fees, et cetera. Some factors in the research that we found that contribute to illegal dumping are limited or insufficient access to affordable waste sites, again, areas where there's frequent illegal dumping, areas with high crime, areas with high populations of renters and absentee owners, and lower-income areas. Physical features that contribute to illegal dumping include undeveloped lots, abandoned structures, unused facilities, remote spaces, poorly lit access roads, properties along major arterials, railways, highways, alleys, charity block donation locations, and proximity to junkyards, heavily wooded areas, and rural areas. Looking at the Lakewood Municipal Code, illegal dumping is a public nuisance, and the city could prosecute these violations as misdemeanors, gross misdemeanors, as well as infractions. And for a infraction, the general civil penalty is up to a fine of $500 per day, per a violation, per a violator. And then list the citation for the general criminal penalty here in Lakewood Municipal Code. And we'll get into that in a little bit more detail when we take a, a deeper dive. Looking at illegal dumping, this isn't just a phenomenon that's happening here in the city of Lakewood. It happens all over Washington State. It also happens all over the country, as I have found out. If you look, the city of Kent cleaned up 57 tons of illegal waste in 2017. Spokane Valley cleaned up 350 tons in 2012. And the Department of Ecology estimates that more than 12 million pounds of litter are tossed into our highways and roads each year. So I went through those common factors and physical features, and Lakewood has many of them that could be leading to what's compounding the issue here in the city. So, for example, areas with high population of renters and absentee owners, lower-income areas, no public access to disposal sites, remote spaces, and in some cases, heavily wooded areas. Looking at Lakewood, though, I think we should also celebrate some of our past successes in this regard. We have lots of programs and projects that have helped curb illegal dumping here in the city. So this includes, you know, standing up the Lakewood Police Department and several programs that they have implemented, such as the Community Safety Resource Team and the Behavioral Health Team, adding sidewalks, adding additional L E D lights, adding accepted controls such as barriers, cameras, lightings, et cetera, concentrating resources on abating dangerous and derelict properties, creating the Rental Housing Safety Program, adoption street programs and other volunteer programs, and then the fall and spring cleanups that we do with Waste Connections, which I want to dive a little bit into the, the data that we've received over the last couple of years of doing the, the fall and spring cleanups. So since 2017, which was our first cleanup, and that year, we just did the fall, and then we did spring and fall for the next year. We're looking at around 1,800 carloads that came through the cleanups. Each time, the average was, you know, around 435 or so carloads per a cleanup event. Of those 435 carloads, they brought in around 350 tons of materials. So this is around 700,000 pounds of garbage that was brought in during this time. So the average carload at each of these events was bringing in around 400 pounds of materials to dump during the spring cleanups. And that's been fairly consistent. If you look at the graph here, it's always been around 400. So just looking at garbage, so this is general garbage. This doesn't include the mattresses, the metal material. There were about 300 tons of garbage collected during this time. So this is the bulk of what's being collected is kind of that general garbage. This one here is showing you the metal tons, and you can see that this one is a kind of fascinating where it's, it's kind of gone up and down. We had a huge uptick of metal materials here at our last event. Almost 13 tons were brought in during this time. Altogether, around 24 tons were brought in. Mattresses, again, around 8.4 tons of materials were brought in. This number has declined over the last couple of cleanups, and we'll continue to take a look at that and see if that continues in future cleanups. And then tires. Tires also declined at the last cleanup. But as a whole, we've brought in around 2,700 tires during this period of time. So looking at my Lakewood three-one-one data, as well as the personal experience of our personnel here at the city, the following areas were identified as the most frequent hotspots for illegal dumping. One thing to point out is they're all generally on the periphery of the city. There's none that's, you know, in the center, and they're all, we'll kind of go over the, the physical characteristics of what you see in each of those locations, but they're going to match a lot of those attributes and characters that we just discussed. So here's a couple pictures of some of those hotspots. You have Exhibit Two right here, which is showing 47th Southwest and McCord. As you can see, this is a, a hot tub that looks like it was rather professionally diced up and dumped in this area. Over in Exhibit Three, you have Zircon Drive, which is a heavily wooded area that goes down into Chambers Creek. And you can see that there have been a large trash bags dumped into that area. And then over here in Exhibit Four is 146 and Woodbrook, which we found a lot of furniture out in that area. So again, taking my Lakewood three-one-one data, we took a look at our requests. And what you see here in blue are the garbage-related my Lakewood three-one-one requests. And then the green shows all my Lakewood three-one-one requests. So typically, garbage-related requests make up around 23% of my Lakewood three-one-one requests. And this number has been very constant throughout the last couple of years. We took this information, and then what we did was we actually subcategorized them based on the descriptions that people put into their requests to create a couple additional subcategories. And so what we have is we have garbage general. So that is anything that doesn't fit any of the following categories. So this is everything from, hey, there's a couple of items in the right-of-way to, hey, somebody dumped nine bags in my front yard. Furniture and appliances, that also includes barbecues and basketball hoops, construction materials, shopping carts, dead animals, tires, televisions, and trees and vegetation. What you can see is that the general garbage had the most requests at 45%, and then furniture and appliances was around 30%, and then shopping carts was the third-most populous with 8%. And then the rest are all fairly even in the number of requests the city receives through my Lakewood three-one-one. So this is looking at all garbage requests here in the city, and what you can see is that there are several hotspots in the city. So again, this is where they would be frequently occurring. There are around 2,000 total requests. Hotspot areas are Springbrook, Woodbrook, Stillcom, Custer, Oakbrook, Lake City, and Town Center. And some of the characteristics that you see there, again, are areas with multifamily rentals, dead-end streets, transfer locations, in the case of Springbrook, where we currently have the O and M site, military base entrances, and then wooded areas, for example, Clover or Chamber Creek, again, up on the north side of the city. Garbage general, again, this is your everything that was not subcategorized. What you can see is that, again, it takes up the bulk of the requests that the city has made. You see the hotspots are in very similar areas that I just mentioned, and they share those same kind of common physical characteristics. Shopping carts, in total, there were 150 shopping cart requests. You can see that they are geographically concentrated in the Town Center and Springbrook area. So again, their physical characteristics would be business area shopping carts and those transfer locations with Springbrook as an example. Furniture and appliances, there were about 550 requests. You see very similar areas with Woodbrook, Springbrook, Town Center, Custer Way, and then also near the Starlight Drive-In, and that has a lot of the same physical attributes that we just discussed. For construction materials and dead animals, there really wasn't a kind of a geographic hotspot area. They were all fairly distributed throughout the city. And then we also took a look at graffiti. So this included graffiti requests that came under garbage, as well as graffiti requests that came under graffiti. There are about 200 graffiti requests. What you see is that you see these in areas around I five and then main arterials, but particularly Bridgeport. So we're now going to take a, a look at some potential options available to the city to augment existing efforts. So we're going to look at enforcement options, prevention options, education options, and then a cleanup option. So enforcement, as I mentioned earlier, it is a civil infraction. The city can prosecute illegal dumping in both a criminal and civil venue. And I have the citation up there for a class one. This would be a maximum penalty of $250 for a class two. This would be a maximum penalty of $500. And the thing to really emphasize here is this is a penalty per day, per violator, per instance. One thing to note is that our law enforcement officers have the authority to issue the criminal citations, as well as the civil infractions, and that our code enforcement officers can issue civil infractions alone. Table C here just shows you what the state law is regarding illegal dumping greater than one cubic foot, but less than one cubic yard. So as far as civil infractions and criminal citations, these are the common reasons that one is used over the other. So with civil infractions, it's typically because a larger monetary damage can be collected, as well as the burden of proof isn't as stringent as it would be for a criminal case, and the defendant has to obtain their own legal counsel if they decide to get legal counsel. Reasons for using a criminal citation would be that defendants might take the, the charges more serious than they would an infraction, and it'd also be placed on their record if there was a conviction. The issue with the, the criminal citations and prosecutions is that it's, it's hard to do. That's a lot of the, the feedback that we've seen in the research we've seen on this is it's, it's hard to actually successfully enforce and get prosecution in cases of criminal citations. And so the common use is somebody would go through a bag of garbage that they find in the right-of-way. They would be looking for a mailing address or a prescription bottle, et cetera, and then use that. And what we have found is that that may not be enough for all criminal cases to prosecute. So moving on to kind of the second item under here is enforcement, and this is an abandoned shopping cart regulation. So under these regulations, typically abandoned shopping carts are deemed a public nuisance, and they become subject to civil infractions and/or criminal prosecution. They require that retail stores have fixed identification on shopping carts, and that retail stores also have some sort of security measure placed on the shopping carts to make sure that they don't leave their premise. So these are things like your electronic breaks, your pole heights, or even having people go and round them up on a consistent basis. Shopping carts that are found throughout the city and that are abandoned are charged an impound fee. Jurisdictions collect them, and then when retail stores find out and come back to collect them, they would be subject to that impound fee. A lot of jurisdictions here in Washington State have a fee deferral for the first three shopping carts that they find per retail store, per jurisdiction. Typically, jurisdictions will hold on to the carts for 14 days, and then after 14 days, they can sell unclaimed impounded shopping carts. They can also just dispose of the carts and then charge those organizations disposal fees. So Table G here shows you some jurisdictions here in the state of Washington that currently have abandoned shopping cart ordinances. So you have Renton, Auburn, and then more recently, Federal Way. And you can see they all have different programs, but they generally function the same. They have security measures in every case but Auburn. They require identification across the board. Their impound fees are slightly different, but they all do have impound fees. Their impound times are exactly the same. Federal Way has a salvage fee, so when you come to collect it, in addition to paying the impound fee, you pay the salvage fee. They have fee deferrals at Brenton and Federal Way, and then different types of disposals, but they all have disposal. Table H here just shows you some of the pros and cons of implementing a shopping cart ordinance here in the city.
Do any of those ordinances relating to picking up and impounding integrate with ordinances involving stolen shopping carts?
They're typically separate, but they follow each other.
How do you mean? They follow each other?
Well, so...
I mean, I mean...
Yeah.
These seem to be if the store has a cart and it's sitting somewhere else in the city, this seems to follow that. Yet, if you have a cart from the same store that is a mile from the store being pushed by someone, that appears stolen. That, you know, so I guess I'm trying to see how, how does enforcement of those two things jive? If the person with the cart runs away when they're confronted, then is it suddenly back in the abandoned and become the store's responsibility?
So, sorry, my understanding of the question was whether or not these jurisdictions commonly had both of them?
Well, yeah, well, whether they're actually integrated. For example, one of the reasons we have abandoned shopping carts is because people steal them and they use them for a while, and then they don't. But if we had a uniform system that impounds them but also picks them up, even though they aren't quote-unquote abandoned, but they're quote-unquote stolen at the time, you know, a shopping cart a half-mile from Target with a bunch of stuff in it that isn't Target merchandise, and says Target on the side, is Target property, Target knows it, we know it, we get empowered by Target to take that. We give whoever is utilizing the cart contractor bags to weatherproof whatever they have in there, and we take the cart back. It seems like something like that integrated into an ordinance would deter theft and at the same time recover stolen property.
Right. And so I guess, just to clarify what I said, they typically follow. So what I have seen is jurisdictions have, you know, like a shopping cart theft and then a shopping cart, abandoned shopping cart section. But I do understand what you're saying about integrating the two into each other. Under the pro here, it does say that you could still pursue shopping cart theft under the RCW 9A 56 270. Another thing, looking at research of what other jurisdictions have done regarding this issue, is incentives. So there are ordinances that encourage community members to report illegal dumping activity. And so typically jurisdictions will offer awards only if the information that is provided leads to a successful conviction of a person who was dumping. So I've provided three examples here. We have New York City, Clark County, Nevada, and then Sacramento, California. So each of them have a different system, but they all incentivize getting information that will actually lead to successful prosecutions. Table I here just lists the pros and cons of implementing an incentive program. Another thing that a lot of jurisdictions do are targeted police patrols, which the city does. So the city could, you know, in the potential, look at increasing or look at what they're doing for police patrols, particularly in areas of high volumes of dumping here in the city. Another thing that I found in the research is that jurisdictions are going to what's called environmental enforcement officers. So these are individuals who only enforce illegal dumping activities and pursue, you know, recourse against the dumpers. RCSRT does this to a limited degree. They're doing other things in addition to this, so this isn't their sole function. However, as I mentioned when we were looking at the criminal cases, having an EEO may not be enough for prosecution, just like having the CSRT currently. JBLM, though, does have a fairly successful and robust EEO program. It's called a Trash Cop. And JBLM's system works where they do go through the garbage, they look for that information, and then they sue owners for amounts ranging anywhere from $800 to $10,000.
Mr. Simpson?
Yeah, I can... I can speak to that. I did a ride-along a number of years ago with the Trash Cop at JBLM. And not only will they go through the trash, but they have cameras, specific places sometimes mounted in the back of the room so you can't see it from the outside. And I was with this guy when we had a guy on tape. And this guy thinks he's pulled the, pulled it off, and he goes home, and we were waiting for him. We're waiting for him, and he comes to the door, or he goes in. We come to the door, we knock on the door, his wife is there, his kids are there, and he's there. Now, would you explain to us why you did what you just did 30 minutes ago? So yes, that is a very efficient program they run out there, but a lot of it is, like I say, camera-based. They have major intersections, major dumpsters, under surveillance 24 hours a day. So, yeah, I can definitely speak to that.
This is, again, just a very preliminary estimate of what an EEO would cost the city. And then Table J here lists the pros and cons of adding an EEO here at the city. Moving to prevention, so we currently use a lot of crime prevention through environmental design controls, but the city could also continue to augment those controls. So typically, these are things like lighting, cameras, as Councilmember Simpson just mentioned. Police currently do have four cameras in operation that they're using for graffiti and in illegal dumping spots. There are barriers and signs. So what we have here in Exhibit 5 is showing our barriers that we put up here at Nottingham Drive Southwest. And then later on, we came back and added new no-dumping signs. So the city now has a couple of no-dumping signs, and in the future could change the signs to kind of send a starker message to illegal dumpers. Table L here lists the pros and cons of implementing more septic controls here in the city. Moving to education, a lot of jurisdictions have comprehensive education programs. So they typically include information on what residents should do if they see illegal dumping, where they can illegally, or not, where they can legally dump, what the ramifications are of illegal dumping, and then how to dispose, like I just mentioned, properly goods across the board, so different types like televisions, white goods, garbage, et cetera. What we have here in Attachment A is a draft of a brochure that is targeted for residents who witness illegal dumping. And what it basically says is the information of where you can contact if you see illegal dumpers, and what kind of information we'd like to have provided, and then what you can do to help. So where you can take garbage to properly dump it. Last thing, community cleanups. We kind of already went over the fall and spring cleanups. But some other things that the city could look into is the discounted code enforcement cleanup support events. Per our current contracts with Waste Connections, we can go have 10 events with 40-yard dropbox containers at no cost to the city. So one way that the city could use this in the future is by having, you know, cleanups in hotspot neighborhoods. And then a future consideration for a future contract with a Waste Connection could be a call-in hall service. So this is where residents can call a number and have the waste company pick up their goods once or twice a year. We've got Table O here, which lists the pros and cons of implementing additional cleanup opportunities. And as you can see, there's just not a whole lot of cons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In that, you're talking, so the 10 are in addition to the two that we have now, or would there be eight?
So the 10 are in addition to the two, but they're not like the community cleanups where it's kind of that unlimited, you can have as many people come in during those two-day periods. It's you can have 10 boxes up at 10 different times. Or you can have, you know, three boxes three times and then a one box somewhere else.
Okay. So your idea is 10 different events during the year, as much as 10 different events during the year in specific communities where you just tell everybody, hey, bring your, and then you tell them what you can bring? I mean, that's one of the ideas.
Yeah, not necessarily 10 different events, but like I said, maybe you're talking about holding an event in one neighborhood that would require three boxes or two boxes in another neighborhood.
Okay. Has that been shown to be effective? I mean, it sounds great, like we've got this tool available to us. And this popped out to me like, well, this is one we could do, and there's not an enforcement element, and... But does it work? I mean, or is a lot of this just, hey, I'm moving out of wherever I rent, and I'm just going to go dump this stuff? Or is it possible that in Woodbrook and in Spring Brook, there are actually folks that don't live in those neighborhoods?
I think that's very possible, that people are coming into those neighborhoods and dumping in those areas. I think that the container boxes would help, though, as well in those neighborhoods.
Yeah, I think that that particular strategy, particularly if it's just not a date selected by the city, we already have community organizations, churches, things like that, that organize neighborhood cleanups. They tend to look for a business that's got a box or someone there that says on that day would do that, and they collect 50 or 60. Habitat for Humanity has organized them each of the past couple of years in Tillicum on a particular day to be able to go and do that. And so if the city, through the provisions that are in our trash contract, can help organizations that want to sponsor an event and look to do that, that, I think that would be, that would be appreciated to go on. I guess that you spoke in your, in the area of enforcement, and you spoke about the possible penalties and things to do that. But the penalties aren't new. The penalties exist now and are there. I guess the issue is, what really is our track record? Okay? You know, that how often do we actually issue infractions or pursue a criminal prosecution to be able to go and do that? Do we, do we have any success in doing that, or do we have any prioritization or deprioritization of that kind of enforcement in our current environment in the city? Do we, do we know from legal, in the past three years, how many cases we've had or been able to cite? Or are we... My impression is I hear a whole lot more about our reactive responses of getting things cleaned up. And the public does see that as an essential municipal service, and they actually give us pretty high marks for doing things in a timely way once things are reported. You know, so that's a positive thing, but that don't really see much in the, in terms of, we get things cleaned up, but holding people accountable doesn't seem to be routinely something that we make much effort to do, except perhaps in the case of some of the construction wastes, things where there are really significant things to do. I have heard a couple of those in pursuit. But, you know, I'd be concerned about just adding more regulations with punishments and penalties that sound good if we don't have the wherewithal to want to make an emphasis on it to actually do the enforcement and just hope that the fact that there is a punishment will scare people off.
So I'm kind of a numbers guy. So the number on what we're spending to pick stuff up now is about a quarter of an FTE?
That's on the, the number of dumps that they went to based on their My Lakewood 311 reports. Yeah.
So do we have a number for what we're actually spending on cleaning stuff up? Reported dump, illegal dumping?
Correct, correct.
Is there more than, I assume there's some that are self-reported or whatever that's outside of My Lakewood 311?
Right. And also, I mean, if the crew goes out to a location and they're cleaning up, you know, one report, and if they see other garbage, they might be picking up garbage in those locations as well.
But if, is this proposal or option for a dedicated FTE, someone who will actually do cleanup?
Typically, my understanding is that the Trash Cop does not actually do the cleanup, or the environmental enforcement officer does not actually do the cleanup.
Yeah, so we've got to add an administrative employee, but we don't get anything additional cleaned up for it.
That's correct.
So I guess my, kind of the dumb question is, where's, where's the, where's the breakpoint? Where, they're always going to be idiots, and it's hard to catch people dumping other than look through their stuff. I had construction dumpsters for a while, and I did some self-help. I could tell who filled them up with crap, and I took them back down the street and gave them back to them. But I spent too much on garbage and garbage disposal in my life to pay for other people's. But I guess I'm a little concerned that we'd spend a, we wouldn't necessarily get as much bang for our buck having an enforcement officer as we would, having better response to cleaning up things that are there. Plus, the public perception is if I complain about it, something gets cleaned up faster because they're always going to be idiots. I'm just quest, I guess questioning the resource allocation there. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share your experience on tracking people down for dumping because I've done the same thing, giving it back to them. And I also spent some time in the garbage business as well. When I was out of college, I drove a 40-yard Waldorf truck. So I know exactly what you're talking about there, which leads me to my next, and I'm using your word, perhaps. Did you use the word stupid or dumb?
I used idiot.
Oh, idiot. I have another idiot idea for you.
I changed from beating to beating.
And that's this. Did you ever read former and past Senator Daniel P. Moynihan's Broken Glass Theory?
I have not.
Well, Senator Moynihan postulated that in order to get crime under control in the city of New York, that if you fixed the window that was broken as soon as possible, you would decrease crime because the broken window, if it wasn't fixed, would lead to other crime. And his theory was tested, and it worked. So I was thinking to myself, perhaps maybe a 20-yard box on a truck, city employee drives the truck, maybe has a helper, and we keep the city clean because we do daily patrols of all these areas where we know the aforementioned knuckleheads are going to drop their garbage, get it off the street as soon as possible. And through that process, the message will get across that Lakewood does not tolerate that. I don't know what the cost of this would be. I would be curious of the cost analysis that would go into something like this. But I would think that if you could combat the deterioration of the city of New York back in the '70s with that simple broken glass theory, I wonder if it wouldn't work here in Lakewood on a much smaller scale in the picking up of the tons of garbage. in the picking up of the tons of garbage, just a thought.
Mr. Bulkey? Do we ever catch anybody illegal dumping?
Have to follow up on that.
Okay. I just wondered, I mean, it, it does happen frequently, clearly, and I really do enjoy the heat maps. I guess on the community cleanups, which I've already said I like, ten events, that clear, I mean, then in my mind, I mean, it seems like when we do these big events, when I went through there, it's all hands on deck. Half the city, city staff is working. We clearly can't expect that, you know, ten times a, ten times additional year, you know, once a month. So I, I guess I would need to know more about, does that necessitate that need of that EO whatever person to coordinate those or how do you go about that? I mean, is that our cost of entry into trying to coordinate ten events a year? Or does, or does the Waste Connections do that for us as part of that, you know? How, how do we do that? Because you do have to publicize these things too. So I'm, you know, what are we signing, I, I think it's a great idea, but then what am I signing up for, right, from a cost standpoint? Okay, and, and, okay, thank you. Mr. Rensselaar?
You know, that it's, um, you, this is a, you know, a problem that's gonna stay with us. You know, that we're going to have, uh, trash and, 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 and dumping or littering or whatever, whatever it is. That, um, my own experience is that in the way that the city now responds, that citizens are by and large pretty satisfied that we're doing well. That we are responsive. If, if somebody reports something, somebody from the city does something and takes care of it. And they actually give us pretty good marks for that. They, they wish that it wasn't there, but that in terms of their evaluation of the city services, we did, we're getting an actually a, a, a pretty good grade. Most of the complaints that I really get about, uh, about this and, 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 and who speak most severely about the problem are from our own city employees that have to go out there with gloves and have to clean stuff up when they really could be doing what they feel are their more productive things, folks, folks to do that. But, um, you know, if we're trying to try to make a decision on a strategy and resources for this, you know, I think, uh, I would start to look at, at something that's, that's data-driven and we ought to have some metric that we say we can measure. And are we satisfied with it the way it is now? Or do we wanna move it in a direction and then devise a strategy to move that metric? Rather than just, well, it's a problem, let's choose something from a list of things we might do that other jurisdictions have done over the past twenty years. And, uh, you know, we, we kind of have to decide, we're not gonna, we're never gonna get to, to there's, there's no trash anywhere on the streets and to do that. But we kind of need to decide what's, what's, what's the measurable thing that we want to achieve so that we can then craft a solution that goes towards that. And so, you know, I know we don't, in the, in the current dashboard, we don't have a metric that relates to trash pickup and, and cleaning up, uh, even though it's a task that we devote the equivalent of a quarter FTA a year, two. And it's, uh, and it's, and it's, and it's, and it's a miserable thing that citizens might be interested in how well we're doing. But more importantly, we ought to be interested in how well we're doing. And we need to decide what constitutes well and what constitutes unacceptable and we have to do better.
Are you looking for some guidance on this?
So, uh, as far as recommendations and next steps go, um, the top two bullet points here are policy considerations. So, um, what we just went through were what the research showed us, what other jurisdictions were doing. The recommendation was that it, uh, we'd look more into the shopping cart regulation as well as adopting some sort of code that would allow for incentives for reporting information. At this time, uh, we wouldn't recommend going with a, another enforcement, uh, officer who would be specifically looking at, uh, trash cleanup. Bottom three bullet points are looking at, um, kind of administrative things, continuing to use accepted principles to curb illegal dumping. So this would be things like augmenting our camera program, um, taking a look at use of barriers and lighting in conjunction with our camera program, um, starting an educational program. So, uh, getting the message out about illegal dumping and what happens to illegal dumpers. And then also using those ten community cleanup days. And with that, that actually concludes my presentation. So if there are any more questions?
Any other questions? What they just note anecdotally is that when you talk about the education program, you might, um, emphasize working with the schools because kids are much more aware of environmental issues than their parents sometimes and are able to shame them into doing the right thing. Well, thank you very much. Now move to a review of renewal of interim controls on wireless service facilities.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tiffany Spear and then Dave Viewers here with me as well from Community and Economic Development. So this is item number four on your agenda and it begins on page one hundred and twenty-two of your packet. I do not have a separate PowerPoint presentation, so I'm just gonna be referring to your packet for both this topic and also the next one. If you'll recall back in January, there was an emergency ordinance that you adopted, uh, number seven oh three, in order to come into compliance with a FCC regulatory ruling, which was adopted the year prior, talking about wireless service facilities and in particular 5G or small wireless facilities and how they might be authorized and regulated within the city of Lakewood. So this was done on an emergency basis and then you, you per statute had a public hearing on February fourth. And the length of time for this ordinance was six months and we're coming up on that deadline now. And because the intention is to incorporate permanent regulations on this issue into the upcoming Title eighteen A update, that will not be before you, before the six months expire or, or ends. So we're asking that the council consider just simply renewing the interim ordinance until eighteen A comes toward you, uh, this fall. So there's absolutely no changes to what you adopted six months ago. And we would just ask if you have any questions. Otherwise, it's the same thing, just asking for action once more.
Any questions? Mr. Rensselaar?
When we adopted the, uh, interim ordinance, we adopted ordinance seven oh three.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
The interim, ordinance seven oh three was the interim regulations.
Ordinance seven oh three was what the council adopted, which included interim regulations.
So, um, when we extend the interim regulations, are we amending seven oh three? Or will, will it be a, a new ordinance with a, with a seven twenty or?
I'm gonna defer to the city attorney. I'm not sure.
Councilmember Bransdottir, members of the council, it's my recommendation that we do a follow-on ordinance so that when somebody looks at the legislative history, if they wanna try and track it, they can see that the council was well aware that this has a finite time period and that you are very deliberately creating a longer time period.
Okay, thank you. The issue of, uh, the small cell towers came up in the integration with the base. And the most worthless comment I heard from a panel was someone on the panel supposedly in the know from Department of Defense suggested that the city, they could use the help of the cities exercising their regulatory power, ignoring both the fact that we have no jurisdiction on the federal reservation and that the FCC has taken virtually all our regulatory authority away. That was an amusing solution. So we stay with Ms. Spear and move to a review of the two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments.
Thank you once more, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So this now will begin on page one sixty-two of your packet. And I'm just gonna walk amendment by amendment. So this should walk you through your electronic version of the packet as well, hopefully relatively easily. On June fifth, the Planning Commission passed its or, uh, resolution, excuse me, recommending, uh, certain actions to the council regarding the two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment docket. And that is included in your packet, um, at the end of these materials. I'll refer to the page number, um, later on as, as we get there. But what's included in your packet tonight is the background information that was provided to the Planning Commission. And then there's a few items that have been updated since, based on discussions that were had there. And then also a summary of the city's recommendation that went to the Planning Commission and then the Planning Commission's recommendation on each specific, uh, applied for amendment. And then at the very back, there will be, uh, for your reference, um, the resolution itself that was signed by the Planning Commission. So again, if there's not any other questions right now, I'll just start moving, uh, through these as they come. On page one sixty-two, again, you'll see a list of all of them. So, uh, five, one, two, three, four, five, six are map amendments specifically. The first three include private applications with or without the addition of a public or city application that was incorporated into their, uh, the ultimate application. And then items four, five, six under map and then the map and text and all of the text amendments, those are all stemming from either specific city staff or the city council itself as part of the package this year. There was an analysis done of housing capacity. And the way this was done for this comprehensive plan cycle was slightly different than perhaps in past cycles because last year there was the downtown suburbia plan adopted. And if you'll remember, uh, within that, there was a, a significant uptick in the housing capacity within the downtown suburbia boundaries. And so on page one sixty-three, you'll see a chart that provides you with the net increase of housing within, uh, the downtown suburbia boundaries of about twenty-two hundred and fifty. And then also an increase in the job growth within that area. And so what staff has done in all of these recommendations to you is to take a look at what any of the particular amendments do either up or down to housing. Compare it also to the increase in housing because of the adopted suburbia plan to provide you with a net increase or decrease conversation. So just as, as you move through this packet, you'll see reference back to that two hundred and twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-two hundred fifty-seven number with each one. Beginning on page one sixty-four, then you'll see the application that's shorthand referred to as Tillicum. And this is one that would affect, uh, a number of parcels down in the Tillicum neighborhood. And it would be, uh, in essence, anticipating economic development or promoting economic development down near one of the interchanges that's being affected right now by the I-five expansion. And the applicant wanted to rezone and redesignate property in order to, uh, meet what's the anticipated additional commercial and retail demand there. If you walk through, you'll see on page one sixty-five, one sixty-six, one sixty-seven, there are maps of the various parcels that are involved. And then you'll see, uh, starting on page one sixty-eight, a number of pages that pull information out of the current comprehensive plan about Tillicum itself, the Tillicum neighborhood, the Tillicum Center of Local Importance. And then jumping ahead to page one seventy-five, you'll see the recommendation after looking at all of the variously required criteria in the Lakewood Municipal Code. So the recommendation on this one that came from the Community and Economic Development Department was actually to deny this without prejudice, meaning, uh, it's simply not timely, but there's no other reason as of now to maybe not do it. So the idea here is given the fact that there's been some lengthy conversation, not only with the residents within Tillicum, but at the city council level about, uh, how to best promote this area, best improve this area. Taking this as just a one-off maybe isn't the best idea.
Two thousand nineteen oh one?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. That perhaps the preferable way to do this is not only wait for the construction to be completed on the I-five expansion to see exactly what that's gonna look like by the time it's done, but also to look at a corridor study perhaps within the Tillicum neighborhood and take a look at this in, in light of surrounding properties, in light of other, um, uh, commercial areas that are already within that, that part of, of the city and decide at that time if rezoning or redesignation is appropriate.
So this is under consolidated ownership now?
The properties?
Yeah.
I believe so.
So what, what advantage do we gain, you know, from an eco, economic development standpoint by delaying?
Through the corridor plan, which is something that the council may wish to consider, you may find that the neighborhood commercial zone may not be the best fit with, within the area and that you might be looking at some sort of different zoning along Union Avenue and at the intersections. So from economic development perspective, if you just go with NC two zoning, that may not be the best use if you're looking at corridor planning. And thus, you know, taking a more long-term vision about what is appropriate might be the better way. The other thing that keeps popping up in the comprehensive plan is the city's, um, issues over strip commercial development, which is a, a topic that comes up frequently in, in the comprehensive plan and along certain streets in the city of Lakewood and that, uh, we have too much commercial zoning. Are we doing the same thing with this proposal by, uh, moving forward with more commercial zoning at this time? Yes, it would be mixed use, but is there a more appropriate type of activity along this area, in Lakewood, in Tillicum rather than NC two zoning?
What would that be? I mean, it's, it's in the middle of a freeway interchange now. Doesn't seem like a place people wanna live.
I, I would agree to that, but at the same time, do you wish to expand it into existing residential neighborhoods? I suspect with this proposal, you could see more requests for more commercial development on other parts of Grant or on Berkeley, uh, Berkeley Avenue into other parts of the city.
Mr. Bulkey? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when we go through this, what kind of activities would be allowed if we were to agree with the owner?
If you look on pages one seventy-four and one seventy-five of your packet, you'll see the allowed permitted outright uses, uh, for both R three, which is the current zone, and then the NC two, which is the requested zone. And, um, it may be somewhat counterintuitive, but the bold are the ones that are allowed in both. The ones that are regular text are the ones that are unique to either one. So within NC two, you just need to look at the regular, uh, type items to show you what could be done if it were to change.
Okay, so the bold and?
The bold is allowed in both.
Are the ones that are unique to the?
The bold is allowed in both, sorry. And the regular text is what's unique, I think. You might have just corrected me, Mr. Bulkey.
No, I think it's the other way around because single-family residential, oh, no, I see, but it's the levels.
Yes. So the staff had recommended that to the Planning Commission and Planning Commission actually did recommend denial as well. Uh, and that's, that's reflected in your packet toward the back.
And did the owner speak at all?
No.
And when you say denial without prejudice, what is that?
Just, just simply meaning that you're welcome to bring it back at a future time without any reflection on the application when it comes again.
That would be, well, one of the things that could happen is if as a part of the upcoming work plan for the department, the city council indicates that you would like to see a corridor plan for the Tillicum area, in which case the city would initiate that. plan for the Tillicum area, in which case the city would initiate that proposal, and you would see that in the next cycle, which would be 2020.
Okay, so, and, and when you made those comments about Union Avenue, it struck. So are you, are, is staff recommending a sub area plan or something like that, or do we have one for that community already, or a redo of it?
We're not recommending a sub area plan for Tillicum. We're recommending something specific for Union Avenue and at the interchange locations. I'm also anticipating that when Thorin Lane redevelops with the new interchange, you might see some additional requests for commercial development at site. So let's just take a look at it cumulative in one, one fell swoop.
Okay, and when are those two interchanges supposed to be done? Any day now?
Well, I can tell you that, you know, I was through there over the weekend, and they're making progress on Berkeley, so it's pretty substantial. I would say 18 months to 24 months.
Okay.
We can certainly follow up, Mr. Mr. Bullock.
Mr. Mayor, in response to your question about what do we gain by delaying from an economic development strategy, I think the, the issue is somewhat, how much do we want to gain in Tillicum? I think that there's a finite capacity for economic development in Tillicum. You know, it's, you know, barring there being some substantial increase in, in, in multifamily things doing that. And we already have a significant amount of, of area that is actually zoned in C and in commercial along Union Avenue. And, you know, NC zoning tends to get you very spotty, sporadic, non-cohesive development like we have in others. And we're looking to invest in a, in a catalyst site on Union Avenue at the other end of it. And so I think that we have some, you already have done some planning and, and are moving forward and are investing some city dollars in creating a catalyst to spur development out the north end of Union Avenue. And to concurrently do this in the south end of, of Tillicum is, both will not develop, you know, I, I don't know which one would really take off first. I suspect, you know, you might see something here. So I, I, you know, I, I'm in favor of really trying to decide what do we really see Tillicum becoming, and how much commercial land does it really need to, to, to meet that vision? And, and what role, what does a new library as a catalyst play, along with a, you know, much longer horizon, a, a getting development in, in, in an area where that would be very appropriate for a Amtrak station? I think that's something that needs to be put together more of a plan rather than piecemeal responding to the request of a property owner to want to do something with a specific piece of property that is non-conforming with the, with the way the current zoning is.
I'm just concerned that we're not recognizing the fundamental change. You know, business is located, freeway interchange is, is prime commercial property if you're at it, and it's crappy residential property right now. Best thing that could happen to it is a bulldozer. And so we get to upgrade the quality of the city because somebody is going to have the opportunity to take advantage of a prime location where no one's going to want to build an upscale apartment building, for example. They're going to want to build something that is facilitated by a freeway off-ramp. It's, it's the reality. And when we're looking at Union Avenue, I don't think we can say, well, you've got to be in the middle. People are going to want to be on the ends. And it's, every time we delay something, it gets farther down the economic cycle, and less likely that it'll happen, and then you'll be another 10 years. I guess, put another way, I'd, I'd be really interested in, personally be really interested in buying it, I think I would do, if it's NC-2, and if it's residential, it's a liability. I'd try to unload it as quickly as I can so I wouldn't have to pay the real property Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can see your point, Mr. Bueller, on, I mean, your, your, your strategy is very well thought out, it's careful, it's calculated. I don't mind that. But I am also reminded that economic activity does end in urban renewal. So why are we letting the land sit still now? Why aren't we developing that, as the mayor was saying, now? Why are we waiting? And that's, and it's, either one of you can answer back, but I mean, I see why you say what you say, I understand that, but it seems to me that if the idea is economic or urban renewal, bringing jobs to the area, then putting that land to use in a commercial way is, to my way of thinking, the way to go.
My response to your comment is, first of all, we're reacting to a request. So someone's come in with an application, and we're going through the review process. Another aspect to this is if this is really going to be a freeway or visitor-serving commercial type of a zone, NC-2 is not the right zone. That should be something different, that's more relevant to the type of, of activity that you would see at this location.
All right, moving on to the next application, which is number 2002, beginning on page 176 of your packet. This is one that originally was two separate applications, but were brought together into a single one, given their geographic proximity. The two parcels involved that are along Bridgeport Way are part of the private application, and then there's a third parcel somewhat off of the road, separated by one more parcel. That is a suggestion coming from the city. The applicant wanted to rezone the properties along Bridgeport Way from the current zoning of I-2, Industrial 2, to Commercial 2. And then the, the parcel in the back there that again was included from city staff due to a Scrivener's error essentially on, on a rezone in the past, was to move that from Multifamily 3 also to I-2. After looking at this, looking at the surrounding current land uses and zones, and considering, starting on page 179 and 180, the history of the Center of Local Importance designated on South Tacoma Way, which is the only place where you see this requested zone, the staff recommended to the Planning Commission that this move forward in a slightly different way, that the recommendation for the two parcels on Bridgeport would not go to Industrial 2, but would actually go to Neighborhood Commercial 2, and then that third parcel would go to Industrial 2. When this was brought to the Planning Commission, there was a lot of conversation, there was relatively significant public comment from the applicant and their representatives. There was a lot of discussion by the Planning Commission about it. When they took their vote, two of them were absent, so out of a total of five people there, it was a split vote, three to two. So there was different ways of thinking about this and where the city wanted to see Bridgeport go in the future. So certainly there's different perspectives to be had on this application, but in the end, the Planning Commission did recommend that all of three parcels be rezoned, redesignated to Industrial 2. And if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a few comments on this proposal. If you go to C-2, the C-2 zone through a conditional use permit process would allow for type 4 and type 5 group homes. Type 4 is your secure community transition, and type 5 are group homes where residents are under the jurisdiction of criminal justice system. Those would be DOC halfway houses. And previous councils have directed that that stay on South Tacoma Way or portions of PAC Highway and not be on the western side of the city. So if, if the council were to move forward with the C-2 zone at this location, it would also allow for type 4 and type 5 group homes under the current regulations. I wanted to point that out just because we've had significant conversations with adult family homes and group homes with this council.
This is the block plant or property, some of this adjacent to Walmart?
Yes, this, there is the block plant, there is a kiln in the backside of the property, and they manufacture blocks, and you have large numbers of, large trucks coming and going from the site on a regular basis. One of the discussions that the council had, or the commission had, was why would we want NC-2 zone next to this facility, because NC-2 zone would allow for mixed-use development. My response to the commission was, it doesn't mean it has to be mixed-use or residential, it can be just NC-2 as well. The other option is to proceed with C-3 zoning, which is further to the north, which was a part of the Walmart zoning that was approved many years ago. So there are options here, but.
This would, this would allow fast food?
In the, their proposal?
Yes.
Yes.
So they're rezoning it to put a fast food pad in?
That's my understanding. I, I think the city's issues are much larger than a fast food restaurant.
I understand that, yeah. And this was Planning Commission, three, three to two, yes?
Three to two, yes, with the applicant's proposal. So they did not agree with the staff proposal, or the recommendation.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Bullock? Help, help me understand, I'm on 176, existing zone I-2, existing, so let's look at the two parcels that are definitely. What did the landowner ask for?
The landowner asked for C-2.
And when they, and then what was staff's recommendation?
NC-2.
And what's the difference between those two?
If you jump to page, it's very small, let's jump into. Jumping to page 182, you'll see a large chart which has been brought down to be very small and you're not high enough. And then if you go over onto page 184, they're right above the, the paragraph that says CED recommendation that says, in summary, some of the level of convenience commercial uses are allowed in all zones except I-2, some level of eating and drinking establishments are allowed in all of the zones, drive-throughs limited to coffee kiosks are allowed in I-1, drive-through facilities as requested by the applicants are allowed in C-2, and then food stores are allowed in NC-2, C-3, and C-2. These are all the primary permitted uses. There's also the opportunity perhaps for a conditional use consideration, but this is the, the primary permitted.
So.
Mr. Bullock, you might come up a little bit.
Yeah.
Explain this. If you go to Custer Road.
And you drive down Custer Road from Bridgeport Way to 75th, that entire area is owned in C-2. So you see a whole combination of offices, professional offices, you see people selling coffee, you see some level of repair on vehicles, you see also some used car sales and storage facilities. So the C, the in-C-2 zone, as well as apartment complex, the in-C-2 zone allows for quite a bit of, of activity.
Okay, and then so the recommendation is C-2?
Staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission was NC-2. The Planning Commission's recommendation to council was to go with the C-2, which was applied for by the applicant.
Which is what the applicant wanted, and you're saying under C-2, they can kind of do anything?
Under C-2, it allows for a more expansive list of activities that you see along South Tacoma Way. One of my concerns is the type 4 and type 5 group homes that are also allowed in the C-2 zone. And if you, if you say, okay, fine, we're going to allow C-2 zoning without type 4 and type 5 group homes, then where are you going to put them? And so you open up a big Pandora's box of where do these, where do these essential public facilities now have to locate?
And what was, and what was Planning Commission's reasoning for changing that? For going opposite of staff's recommendation, they agreed with the applicant?
They did, and the conversation dwelt in some part on the fact that they were concerned about residential capacity actually within the city, because one of the reasons, or one of the big differences between C-2 and NC-2 is the type of residential activity that might occur in either zone. NC-2 has more options for residential, and part of the reason the staff's recommendation to the commission was NC-2 is immediately across the street on Bridgeport, it is NC-2 as well. And so they were thinking consistency that way. The C-3 item that Mr. Bueller mentioned a few moments ago, that's vertically, if you look on that side of Bridgeport, right above these parcels, Walmart is C-3 as well, so it makes some sense to have that consistency. But it was, it was from the Planning Commission's perspective, looking at where does, where does the city want to be on this part of Bridgeport Way in the future.
That's a good question.
I would also say that some commissioners felt very strongly about private property rights and economic development.
That's fair, yeah, I, I guess then I would just say that there was one other thread of conversation amongst the Planning Commission that was brought forth by the, by the applicant. And the applicant himself was not in favor of a zoning that would allow for residential uses there because he's, that he didn't think that residential uses immediately adjacent to the I-2 block plant that is going to remain immediately behind these parcels was something that they, was desirable or that they, that they wanted to see. And so C-2 was somewhat of a, more of a buffer-type zone between industrial and residential
All right, thank you. 2019-03 begins on page 185 of your packet, and this one is, again, multiple parcels and its multiple applications combined into one here in the docket. So this is related down in Woodbrook to the Clover Park School District's property and a couple of parcels on the north and the south of that along Murray Road. And then up across the north part of Woodbrook, you'll see, I think it's six parcels, some of which, or, excuse me, all of which are multifamily right now. And then all of these parcels, both on Murray Road and along 146th, are requesting international, or international, industrial business park zoning, so that all of these would be rezoned to IBP. And after analysis, staff recommended to the Planning Commission that this move forward as proposed, and then the Planning Commission voted for that as well.
How many acres are we talking about here, additional?
I don't believe that's included in your packet, but we can certainly get that to you tomorrow.
It's about 10. It's about, the colored partial on the end is probably exactly 10, because if you, we're pretty close, if you look down below at the bottom, where there's the jog up and down, that inset is a five-acre parcel. There are four five-acre parcels in a row, there, one of which is within the JBLM fence line. So if you look at that rectangle, and there's about two of them up above there, so.
There's no other questions, I'll move ahead, is that all right?
Please.
Okay, so 2019-04 is on page 190 of your packet. And this is related to parcels around Ward's Lake. It affects five parcels total. This is coming from the city as a recommendation, but there's various reasons behind it. You'll see, for instance, the very odd shaped parcel, which has a long skinny shape along the east side of that. That's currently R3, is proposed to move to C2, which is what is adjacent to it, just to the north. This is right next to obviously Ward's Lake itself, but also the theater along 84th. The meat, the middle rectangular parcel is right now AC2 and R3. And the proposal is to move that to OSR1, Open Space and Recreation 1. And you'll see that it's either wet with a lake or it's wet with wetlands for the vast majority of it. And then the top triangular or trapezoidal piece there is currently R3. And the, the proposal is to take that to C2 as well. So this is trying to just normalize the zoning on Ward's Lake and also nearby that theater complex. And the recommendation from the staff to planning commission was to approve. And the recommendation to you from the planning commission was to approve as well.
This is an attempt to try to align the property boundaries with, the land use and zoning boundaries with property boundaries. It's still not exactly perfect, but this is better than what we currently have. They've also, we've also had some discussions with our parks director about working with the ownership of the theater complex to acquire some of the, the property behind it for open space purposes and expand the open space designation at future date.
We don't, we don't own all the property to the south, is what you're saying, south of the lake? Because our, our purchases have been, a number of those parcels that are not colored here are, we already own.
That's correct.
And are they OSR1?
Yes.
Okay.
And Ms. Dosworth has used federal, or state grant funds to acquire a significant amount of land in this area.
Okay, and we're, and we have a, one of those parcels that you're showing here is C. We actually are trying to get a grant to purchase.
In the future, we are going to be working towards trying to do that, yes.
The parcel in the far right, the irregular parcel, is, is a portion of that developable? Nope, because I know the, the back of the Theater Shopping Center property just drops off precipitously into wetlands.
Yeah, it's going to be critical areas, so it's not developable. But we also, so we also have a portion of the land, which is where the commercial buildings are located. So that's what we're trying to accomplish is.
So a portion of it is land?
Yes.
Okay, is already developed, okay.
All right, thank you. So 2019-05 is on page 192, and this is the Springbrook Park expansion. This is, the, the subject of this amendment are three parcels that are to the east of the current park, two of which are already owned by the city, one is not. And if you recall, Mr. Brady Levine actually came to a previous council member in, I'm sorry, council meeting and was discussing this proposal, wanting to know how his, his future with his property may turn out. But what we're talking about here is rezoning all three parcels to Open Space and Recreation in order to be able to eventually annex that into Springbrook Park. And both the city staff to the planning commission and then the planning commission to the council recommend approval. Okay, continuing to 2019-06, which is on page 195. This is a much more extensive application, and this is one that I believe you'll have had several conversations about at the council previously this year. This affects 14 parcels, if I'm counting correctly. But these are all within the Springbrook neighborhood, bounded by Bridgeport Way, Interstate 5, 47th Avenue Southwest. And then further south, there's kind of a diamond cut there over by Clover Creek and then the city boundaries. The intention here was actually coming from the city council to consider rezoning all of these parcels industrial. And rather than come up with a specific recommendation, staff provided to the planning commission four options. And then following up on those four options, there's been internal discussion that's been passed along, I believe, to the council to some extent about actually engaging in a little more environmental analysis of this property in order to verify the presence of floodway and/or floodplain. So I'm going to turn this back over to Mr. Brewer who took the lead on that analysis.
I'm going to try. This, this proposal went through quite a bit of staff review, both in community development and also in the Public Works Department. And one of the more interesting aspects behind this property is you have a floodway and you have a floodplain. The floodway is where most of the water goes when you have a flood. And at the time you have too much water, it gets out of the floodway and then goes into the floodplain. And so generally speaking, they're sort of parallel and they run with the water. But here we have a heart, a really weird situation where the floodplain goes this way and the floodway goes this way. And so what is going on? The two should be kind of parallel to one another. And if you look at the maps, you kind of scratch your head. From what I could tell, based upon doing historical research on the area, many, many years have been ago before the area was developed and colonized, I would imagine that the water from what is now called Clover Creek actually spilled over into what we call Springbrook and then into the freeway and then moved towards Clover Park School District and then became a part of Ponce de Leone Creek and then went into what we call Silicon Lake or at that point, a wetland or a swamp, Silicon Swamp. So that was the real movement of the water. Along came the, men who came in and wanted to redo the, the creek. And so they, they built the creek and they changed the channel flow through the Lakewood community. And they actually dug it all out and they brought in sheep and they pounded it down. And so the water would flow a certain direction into Lake Silicon. Then outside the Lakewood area in Pierce County, there are also other changes in channelization of Clover Creek. And so the water direction got kind of skewed. Then you add to that the culverts underneath McCord Field. The culverts are only designed for a certain amount of flow. Once it reaches that capacity, there's no more water that can move forward into the community of Lakewood or to Springbrook. So it's kind of stuck. So if there's going to be flooding, it's going to occur more likely towards Parkland and Spanaway than in Lakewood. And so as we started doing this information, I went and spoke with Mr. Bucic and says, what's going on here? And his comment to me was the fact that in these micro areas and urban areas, these maps that are provided to us by FEMA are not accurate. And so as we looked at the data together, it became very clear. You have a flood, floodway going this way, floodplain going this way. This doesn't make sense. And then we began doing the analysis that maybe we need to go through and do additional floodplain work on this and then apply for what's referred to as a LOMA application. So that process is underway. And so the recommendation of the planning commission was to withhold taking any action until the city has seen, has seen the results of the LOMA report and then provide other detailed information on land use planning. Now this is critical for the Pierce County property because it's currently in the floodway. So if that doesn't really exist, yeah, if that doesn't really exist, then that provides a whole, a whole, a larger opportunity for the Pierce County flat, or Pierce County piece of property than what we're currently seeing. It also really increases the, the difficulty of developing on this side if, if we don't do anything. And so that was the reason why the commission chose to go with delaying any action until the LOMA report has been submitted. I know that we've spent some money already in hiring an engineer and it takes about a year. So it's hopeful that we can bring this application back next year for further review by the commission and council. I hope I explained that.
So that has, obviously has a salutary effect if somebody at the floodplain chain agrees with the conclusion. What advantage is there to delaying the consideration of this proposal?
I don't think that you'll be able to move forward with the size of industrial development that has been proposed for the, for the Pierce County property. According to my analysis, only about a third of the property would be developable under the current floodplain regulations. With the change in the LOMA report, it could be at 90%, uh, what's the term?
Right, but I mean with respect to this, this isn't the Pierce County property.
That's correct, it's currently zoned industrial, that's correct. But I don't, I'm of the opinion that based upon some other projects in the area, there'd be severe limitations on the ability to move forward with the amount of industrial development that has been proposed.
Okay, but again, what's?
I guess, Mr.?
What's a disadvantage to changing it now and being prepared?
What you would end up with potentially is industrial zoning on that number of parcels and that amount of acreage that in fact, because of floodplain or floodway difficulties, could never really industrially develop. Rather than waiting and getting your LOMA results and being able to verify and, and update zoning through FEMA and on down, then you would have sure, you know, accurate fact check, you can actually do this and that on that property.
Okay, what could, what could you do now under the current zoning that would be inhibited by the floodplain issue?
You can have office development, you can have some commercial development, and you can have apartment complexes. But for example, on the Cloverbrook property, I believe that only 35% of the total lot area was developable. The remainder of the property had to be set aside as open space. They're going up. They're not building two, three story buildings. If they move forward, they're looking at five and six story buildings over in Springbrook.
Mr. Reseder?
Yeah, yeah, let me phrase the question differently. If we move forward with this proposal, what do we preclude happening? Because I think that to some, to, to, you know, to, to some extent, this is an area that we're kind of behind the curve in getting it, the zoning, the way we really think we want it in line with the vision to do that. And you know, and, and, and it's like we had with the downtown plan, you know, people get vested in things. And so, you know, getting the zoning changed, by delaying changing the zoning, you know, I, I guess the, we allow something to happen, but changing it, there are some things that would be allowed under current zoning that wouldn't happen that maybe aren't, aren't, don't align with our vision for the city in this area.
Okay, and to answer your question, if you were to change the zoning to industrial and move forward with that proposal, there would be no further residential development, new residential development being allowed in that area. The other piece to that is that yes, you would be allowed to move forward techni, in theory with industrial development. But I would be hard pressed to tell anyone to, to do that, given the fact that we have this floodplain study underway. Because you would be developing currently, or in a very, in a short period of time, under one set of standards that could, could change dramatically within, within 18 months. So that's, that's the only drawback, if you're willing to wait until the LOMA report is done, with the thought that it would be to your advantage, that, that would be acceptable. But I don't want to give people false hope either. If, if you're going to zone it industrial, can you develop it industrial? Yes, but at a much lower, higher, much lower intensity than what you desire or you would want. So that's the, the dilemma.
So you mentioned going up and stories can, under the currents, current status of floodplains, can you fill? It's a substantial expense if you have to come up to a certain level.
You can fill, provided that you can show as a part of your engineering, engineering, that your fill is not impacting downward properties or upstream, upstream properties, so that if you're filling your.
Not damming.
Exactly. And so typically, what normally happens is you have large areas of land that are set aside for storage of water. And that can oftentimes be parking lots.
So in this particular area, you know, speak to the, the, if our long-term desire that it not be multi-family, then a way to assure that in the nearest possible term would be to change the zoning to something else. I mean, we already have a history in this area where we've changed the zoning one year and then changed it to something else the next year based on somebody wanting and proposing to do something else to be able to go and do that. And so, you, you know, I think we can change the zoning to something that precludes multifamily. And then when the floodplain study is done, if, maybe if we didn't get it exactly to, to the best and possible zoning use for an industrial or commercial use, we, we can make that further a judgment when we do have the result of whether this has changed or, and how it has changed. I mean, we're asking to change and we have a good argument to change it, but whether everybody will agree with changing it exactly the way, that, that we don't have as good a prediction on. But if we delay to where we're another year, we could get an additional multifamily project applied for with an application that would get vested.
That's a possibility.
And this is in the opportunity zone, isn't it?
I think so, yes.
Kind of the butterfly one? All right, any other questions on this one?
Opportunity zone.
Forward.
All right, thank you. Moving forward then to number 2019-6, no, I'm sorry, seven? Or are we at six? Thank you, all right. So this is one that now is both a map and a text amendment, and this was, uh, applied for by the city. This is related to military districts and the, the results of this amendment would change the parcels zoning that are currently split zoned in either AC1 or AC2. And there are a total of, excuse me, 14 parcels that are split zoned currently all the way along the, either border of AC1 or AC2. Then it updates the comprehensive plan, discussion about Joint Base Lewis-McCord and Camp Murray. It amends chapter 18A dot 30 dot 700. And it also looks at the types of uses that are currently allowed within the clear zone. This is something that, it reflects changes on, based on the 2015 ACOO's study and recommendations and guidance within that. There's also one change to the definition section of 18A90 related to recycling. And so this entire amendment went to the planning commission with a recommendation from the city staff to approve. And they also recommend to you approval.
Questions?
Okay, moving on, all right. 2019-08 is on page 232 of your packet. This is a text amendment as well. This is one also that was initiated by the city. This would amend the essential public facilities element within the comprehensive plan. It would also amend portions of chapters 18A20, 18A30, and 18A90 related to the public institutional zoning district and again, essential public facilities. There's a map that you see there on the screen right now, and it shows you that of course, essential public facilities or the public institutional zone are throughout the city. There's not one particular concentrated area. And there's a wide variety of types of uses that are included within the PI zone. Everything from a school district to a library to city hall, to western state. So it, this zone actually affects. So it, this zone actually affects quite a few things. The amendments to the comprehensive plan relate to bringing in some statutory and countywide planning policy language about how to handle essential public facilities. Then there's also, as I mentioned, changes within Title eighteen A related to the type of floodplain, or floodplain year, say that in a better way, page two thirty-eight, avoid citing essential public facilities in the one hundred-year floodplain versus the five-hundred-year floodplain. Just above that, you'll see in the countywide planning policy CF eight, talking about ensuring adequate notice and opportunity for participation. If you jump to page two forty-two and over to two forty-three, you'll see two sections that are being proposed for addition, and this is within eighteen A thirty eight five zero. Subsection G talks about when a public institutional and/or essential public facility's civic use has been discontinued for a period of six or more months, the use of land and/or structures shall be considered discontinued. In the event of discontinuance, that use shall be demolished in accordance with the provisions of the International Building Code. So if something stands disused, discontinued for six months, demolish, demolishing that structure is required. And then under H, you'll see adaptive reuse. In the event a PI and/or essential public facility's use is proposed for adaptive reuse, where the buildings or structures are repurposed for viable new uses other than those originally intended, then there must be a public facilities master plan. It does not constitute an exemption from the public facilities master plan outlined in an earlier section. So both discontinuance and adaptive reuse are then defined in chapter eighteen A ninety. So this, again, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brewer, because there's a history that predates my time at the city.
Within the PI zone, the city has had often discussions with other public agencies on the removal of abandoned buildings. Two coming, two that come to mind are the Oakwood Elementary School, and then also the Oakbrook Middle School, which will soon be demolished. The city's purpose has been to make sure that these buildings go away and do not become public nuisances. There has been some discussion as with the redevelopment of the Western State Hospital site, that there may be a desire to keep the existing buildings and have them mothballed or just set aside for non-use. And a part of this proposal is to make sure that the city has some level of control over that situation. I would just say that when to demolish is really a four-point question, having to do with the quality of the building, the neighborhood fabric, the reuse potential of resulting lots, the nuisance level of the property. So we're trying to get a hold of this in advance, so that we are properly, our codes address the current, certain unique standards that Lakewood has. We also have many public institutional uses, as that map shows. We have not had issues with Clover Park Technical College or Pierce College, but there is some concern that we could be in a position where we're uncomfortable with Western State and their master plan proposal when it is submitted, so we're trying to get in front of it. So this is not specific to Western State. I want to be very clear, this is specific to any property on that map that's in blue.
Mr. Simpson?
Can that time period be less than six months?
No. It's tied to our non-conforming use standards, and there are some specific requirements on what considers, what is considered to be discontinued. I'm trying to keep it all consistent with the other elements of our code. And it says six months or more to give us some flexibility.
All right. So what's the parcel in Woodbrook?
It's the old Wood...
It's the old school that's...
It's the Woodbrook Middle School that will be demolished and replaced with an industrial use.
That isn't...
Oh, that is...
The Old American Lake.
That, that would also be, if it, yeah, that also would be a part of this, so it would also have to be...
So that was part of their rezon request?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's, this one's covered, goes away if the rezon request is approved.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So the Woodbrook Middle School site is already, is no longer zoned public institution?
Correct.
We rezoned it some time ago.
That's right. I'm sorry. It is zoned industrial.
Yeah, so they wouldn't apply to that site?
It would not apply with the PI zone, but there, there's other ways of skinning that cap.
Okay. I had one other question within this section. I'm looking at page two thirty-eight of the packet, where I sort of ended up, and it's a section on amendments to Lakewood Municipal Code Title eighteen A that are being incorporated into this comp plan text amendment. And is the language here in reference to the existing eighteen A and that it's going to change again a month after we deal with this, when we deal with eighteen A again? Or is this language going to survive that and be also in the new eighteen A?
The language that you see here, starting on page two thirty-eight, under eighteen A twenty four hundred, and those sections that follow, they are, at this point, verbatim within the new chapter with a new number attached. And so what the council is looking at right now as part of the comprehensive plan amendment, this would be passed before eighteen A would ever be passed, and so this language would become that old number. It would get reassigned its new number, but it would be this language that you would pass now.
There'd be no, no further text change?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, could get confusing.
You will see some other changes to the air corridor zones with eighteen A update, but hold on for that. It doesn't change substantially the whole material effect, but it does make it easier to read.
All right, jumping to two thousand nineteen oh nine, which starts on page two hundred and forty-five. This is a complete rewrite and reorganization of the comprehensive plan's economic development element. And not to say that it's all substantively rewritten, it's been reorganized and updated. There's quite a bit of statistics and demographics, as you can imagine, in this chap, or in this element, excuse me. And so that has been updated. Where there are some other substantive updates are related to Joint Base Lewis McCord, some of the information that came from the recent SSMCP economic analysis that they commissioned through UW Tacoma regarding JBLM's impact to the area. And so rather than try to show you and redline strikeout what might remain, we just ended up providing an entirely new chapter in order to make it that much more readable for you and for the public as this moves through process. This was recommended for approval by staff and then Planning Commission to you as well. And then if there's no questions there, the final one for tonight is two thousand nineteen dash ten, which is a reaction to a request by Councilmember Bokey last fall, when the council was talking about the subarea plan, downtown subarea plan, that the multifamily common open space requirements outside of the downtown subarea plan be increased to match that that was inside the subarea. So what you see on page two hundred sixty-nine is the, the language for this amendment, and it's simply a one, one word or one phrase change of, changing from thirty square feet per unit to one hundred square feet per unit of common open space. And again, this is to match what's already being required in the downtown area, taking it outside of those boundaries. And this, again, recommended for approval by both staff and by the Planning Commission to you.
And this is closer to other cities?
Correct, yes. So if there's no questions with that, the end of your packet, there's a couple of things you may want to refer to. On page two seventy-two is a map that just shows you the location of all of these various amendments throughout the city. You'll see them in red, or the exception to the red is the blue for public institutional areas, and then the purple AC one, AC two for the military stuff. On page two hundred seventy-three, you'll see the recommendations that came from staff to the Planning Commission. On page two seventy-four are all of the public comments received at the Planning Commission at the various meetings they held. On page two seventy-five are the recommendations to you from the Planning Commission. And then starting on page two seventy-seven is the signed resolution that Planning Commission passed and has sent forward to you for your review. So as this sits, next week would be the public hearing on all of these amendments for you. Then there's the opportunity, should you wish it, to have another study session based on input received on July eighth, and then this is currently scheduled for potential action July fifteenth.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of work. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I commend you for covering such a wide range of, of subject matter with such brevity. So we now go to Mr. Coughfield, reports by the city manager.
Few updates for you. The first item there is some material that we received from Pierce County Library Services District late last week. They are moving forward on their campaign outreach into the community. Long story short, what they plan on doing is trying to visit with a number of stakeholder groups, either in person or through surveys, to obtain feedback and information in terms of would you like to see a new library, not just in the downtown Lakewood area, but also in Tillicum? Also, what services would you like to see as a part of that, as well as other, you know, activities or partnerships? Two of the partnerships, of course, that the city has proposed, while one being some kind of a community center or senior activity center. We'll also encourage the library to reach out to the Lakewood Playhouse and talk with them about perhaps incorporating some kind of a performing arts center into a new, a new library. What they plan on doing is, once they get the feedback from the community, by the way, they're modeling this after the process that we undertook as part of our development of our downtown subarea plan. Once they have that feedback, they're then going to collate that and report back to their board in October, and depending upon what the information says, what the feedback says, they would then move into working with the community in identifying a location, as well as what would be included, as well as conceptual plans and ideas and things along those lines. At the soonest, they anticipate they would go to the vote of the people in August of two thousand twenty. So that would be, you know, a little over a year from now. That's their, that's their current plan in a, in a, in a, in a perfect world. They're also working with the city of Sumner on a parallel track. So the difference in Sumner is they two are looking to have a new library in their downtown. The difference, though, is Sumner already has the property. Likewise, here in Lakewood, we have property in Tillicum, but not in the downtown. So that's kind of where we are, and I just wanted to share that information with you. That's the, again, the material that we received, and they're also, they've also engaged their community foundation board, the fundraising arm of their, of, of, of the library, and as a part of this endeavor, and I believe this is between both libraries, but I might not be accurate on this, that they're looking to raise six million dollars to help, you know, finance, finance this, this endeavor. And they might need help in the community and connecting to people that might be able to help them, so you might expect some outreach there from the foundation board. On Friday afternoon, I met with the Tacoma City Manager to talk about a couple of things, but the one big item was the I-five corridor and seeing if Tacoma would get on board and looking at a comprehensive project from, you know, thirty-eighth or forty-eighth all the way down to Mounts Road. Long story short, she thinks that Tacoma could definitely be in on this, and perhaps bringing in Pierce County as well as DuPont on that. This morning, I was appraised by our Public Works Engineering Director, Paul Bucic, that he had been contacted by the city of Seattle, and the city of Seattle is looking for regional partners to pursue a build, formerly the Tiger Program, to pursue four point two million dollars to look at I-five improvements along the whole I-five corridor in most of Washington State. And so we're going to take a look at that and see if there's any value in participating in that, and of course, you know, we would focus on our corridor here in, in Pierce County, but, so more, more to come on that is, I guess, the best way I would frame that. And then the governor's office reached, actually Commerce reached out to us, and they would like to find some time to present this body with the Governor's Smart Cities Award that recognized our downtown subarea plan, and so have identified either August fifth or August nineteenth, which would be a regular, a regular city, city council meeting. I think you might have seen the news, on Friday, Thursday night, there was a fire down in Tillicum, an old dilapidated building, which we had just identified on our abatement list, burned down and caused some damage on, on properties on, on both sides. I want to commend Martha Larkin, Eileen McCain, and Tiffany Spear for acting very quickly and working with the fire district to actually get an abatement contract pulled together. And so by about, at about four forty in the afternoon, they came to me with, with a contract, which of course I signed, and then the contractor got out there on Saturday and started demolishing the building and also scraping the, you know, the property with all the debris that had been there. Apparently, the previous owner had been evicted, and so all of their stuff was thrown all over, but quite a bit of a cleanup. I expect that they'll probably take another, another day or two, but I did get a photo earlier this afternoon, and the building has been, has been taken down and demolished. But again, great work by our team there, particularly Martha Larkin. Forest Silicon Park is now ours. We signed the paperwork on Thursday, it was Thursday afternoon, and then the state went and filed it with the appropriate folks at Pierce County, so congratulations. It was quite, it was quite, it was quite the endeavor, that's all I have to say.
How many years?
A year and a half.
Pierce County College?
Yes. No, actually, the city did. Now, we're going to work with Pierce County to carve, I'm sorry, Pierce College to carve out our, our...
Pierce College and...
We do, we own it all. We own it all. Is that right?
That's called, that's called leverage.
We, we, we have a gentleman's agreement with Pierce College on this, okay, so...
Session.
Oh, come on! We have, I think you...
A big cork in the sewer pipe.
It's getting punchy, it's getting close to the witching hour. We have, I think as I previously reported, we have reengaged Camp Murray regarding potentially annexation, as well as making improvements down at the bolt launch down on American Lake there. So just, long story short, we're looking to identify a time for our team to get together with their team, including their legal advisor, their CFO, and some other folks, and probably, that's probably going to occur, just based on their training and such, probably in early August, I think August second is the date that we're looking at. So I just want to recognize Nancy Bickford there, who's been, she's been a real good conduit between the city and Camp Murray there. One of the things they brought up again, though, was, you know, they're somewhat reluctant to this, they're willing to have the conversation, the issue is, it can't cost them more money to be part of the city of Lakewood than being part of, being part of Pierce, Pierce County. So we've got a bit, we've got a bit of an uphill battle there to, to, to work through. But the fact that they're coming to the table and having a conversation is a, is a good sign, that's a good sign. I just want to commend Mary Dodsworth, she was able to get an article showcasing our upcoming Summer Fest and ancillary activities in the Showcase Magazine, if you hadn't seen that, very, 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 very well done. Likewise, the Lakewood Farmers Market continues to go gangbuster. So I think we had previously reported that the opening day was like one of the best opening days of all time, while last Tuesday was like the best farmers market in terms of total sales and activity of all time. And so it continues to be a real, you know, real benefit for our community, and people are really enjoying it. You know, and Mary and Sally, by the way, have put together a great team, you'll see some young interns roaming around, they're, they're really doing fantastic work and making it happen. Over at Forest Silicon Park, we did send out a notice to all of our neighbors, as well as some of, you know, like our park visitors know, that we're... well as some of, you know, our park visitors know that we've closed down Angle Lane for a period of time as we begin construction up on the northern side of 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 Angle Lane. We're also doing some traffic calming analysis over along along Elwood, so looking at putting up some speed signs, the indoor some humps or something along those lines. The town of Tillicum, so if you run into, you know, either Mayor Lucas or any of their council members, please thank them because they too adopted a resolution recommending that Amtrak and Washita Rail and all the other organizations move forward with the NTSB recommendations before they reopen the Amtrak line. I understand that Pierce County is also perhaps looking at a similar similar resolution. I know DuPont and Tacoma are as well. In terms of calendar, later this week, here at City Hall, Paul Bucic and his team, actually will be headed up by Weston Ott, our Capital Projects Manager, will be facilitating an open house on the Veterans Drive Project and just there to listen. You know, they've got some ideas and some schematics, basically taking the same approach that we took with Onyx in the Oakbrook neighborhood about a year or so ago. The next evening on June twenty-seventh, from five to seven, also here at City Hall, we're going to be kicking off our first open house on the Legacy Plan and that update. And by the way, it's kind of like the comp plan, the reason we're updating it, it's got to be updated every five years so then we can go apply for state and federal grants we have to. So that's that's one of the driving motivations for doing this. Also, that same evening, it'll be here at City Hall, probably in one of the conference rooms, we're going to have a report out of the survey of the Oak Park neighborhood. You know, we received that historical grant, historical survey grant late last year, so we'll be reporting out on that. Thank you. Myself and Councilmember Branstadter, along with Shannon Kelly Fong, will be over at the AWC Conference in Spokane. I'll be leaving tomorrow evening or tomorrow afternoon, and then I'll be I'll be back in the office on Friday morning. And then, of course, Summerfest, so kind of takes us through mid-July, so that's my that's my report.
Questions from Mr. Caulfield? If there are none, thank you. We'll go to council comments. Mr. Branstadter.
This this past Saturday, I attended the ceremonies regarding the Korean War veterans at the Korean War Memorial in Olympia that was that was put on. Attended by probably three hundred people, included veterans not just of the U.S. forces, but also of Republic of Korea forces who have now are residents here in Washington State, being able to go and do that. A good number of both types of veterans were were from Lakewood. They were here, and there was a recognition by the Consul General from the Republic of Korea that awarded some of the veterans. They, as they have been interacting with Korean War veterans, there is a is a medal that the Korean government has authorized to be awarded to veterans of all of the, any of the twenty-one nations that made up the UN thing to do there. The senior Republic of Korea veteran was a Major General Retired Park, who is ninety-seven years old and a Lakewood resident. You know, so he's a senior in the area of Republic of Korea and officer here to do that. And and he spoke briefly, okay, to be able to go and do that. And as the and as that culture dictates, for someone of his importance and age, that there was a great deal of respect and attention paid to him. The Korean TV stations were there and interviewing him to do that. And I, since he was a Lakewood resident, I gave the general a city coin. I'm I am going to the Association of Washington Cities. One of the things that that takes place there, there are actually two events there that do that. One is the Large Cities Advisory Meeting. And the first time I went to that is I I kept trying to go to those Medium Cities Advisory Meeting, and they threw me out and told me we're Lakewood was too big. You got to go get you got to go over with the Seattle's and Spokane's and Tacoma's to be able to go and do that. But I expect there to be a good bit of discussion, probably around affordable housing, because that the last time that group met, that seemed to be the topic that most of the people wanted to talk about. So I, you know, that. And a year ago, when they did that, there was a lot of talk about two things. One, condominium reform, and around reform of the multifamily tax exemption. Well, you know, condominium reform was something that we were seeking, was in our legislative agenda, that we didn't have anything in our legislative agenda, I don't believe, regarding the multifamily tax exemption or with any with with any great specificity. We have had, as a group, just because we had a discussion about an application recently, that I'm hoping to gather some more information so that as we move forward towards the next legislative year, if that's an area that we want to craft a Lakewood position, changes we'd like to see or not see, that we can. And then there's also a a meeting that is going to be the precursor regarding helping to shape the Association of Washington City's legislative agenda for the next next short session, that I don't think that they're looking for a lot of new things, but they're probably mostly going to be reporting back on what they've accomplished and what they think is doable in this short session to be able to go and do that. But if I'll if there's anything anybody wants me to sort of throw at them and say, why don't you do this? Yeah, I'll talk.
Mr. Caulfield.
Just for Councilmember Branstadter and the council. So we have been talking with AWC, and one of the items that they plan, knock on wood, championing, is to address TIF, Tax Income and Financing, as well as bringing back two tools that have been are one of the tool tools that have been very successful, LIFT and LRF, which are acronyms. One is, can't remember exactly what they stand for, but they are a type of tax increment financing. And again, they've been very, very successful where they've been used, particularly up in Bothell and some other places. And so that's something that we've been working with AWCA.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although our city manager tried to get rid of me today, I just refused to go, but I will miss the next two meetings. I had to do that. But I would I did want to say to about the our commissioners and our boards, LMCC do plan to have a booth at Summerfest, and if there's still openings, if you want to put an application at our booth, we'd be welcome to hand those out at Summerfest.
Okay. Sounds good. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I will not be here next Monday as well, so you'll have to struggle on without Mary and me. Several weeks ago, I was at Curtis High School, where I sat through a an hour-long program in which I watched my fourteen-year-old daughter walk off with not only her four-point-oh average all year, but the highest math and science awards. And what that has to do with next Monday is.
How's that relate to history?
Well, you know, that's I wasn't going to bring that up, but now that you have. Her father sits there wondering, why wasn't it in history? But be that as it may, she she earned the four-oh in history, but she didn't, I guess, do well enough to get, be that as it may, next Monday is her fifteenth birthday. So we're going to celebrate her birthday and then the her academic accomplishments for the year. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Barth.
Thank you. So you might as well just cancel all of the meetings, because I'll be gone from the first through the through the fifteenth.
Of July. Getting skinny here.
We're getting skinny. That's all you need, right? If you need me for some ungodly known reason, I can drive into town and talk on the phone. But anyway. And just as anecdotal, I just had to laugh when I, you know, how my I get on Facebook and I read the Lakewood comments, and I just had to laugh. The situation was horrible, the fire in Tillicum, it was very horrible. But one of the comments was, and you'll appreciate this, in the city of Lakewood, all you have to do is identify the property that you want to get rid of, and there will be a fire.
Mr. Caulfield and I were were out of town.
You were out of town. I I almost, yeah, anyway, I.
The last time that happened, I was I was I was in the Philippines or someplace.
Wasn't at the school?
Yeah, I was in the Philippines when the school burned down. That's why you can't tag that on me.
I thought it was kind of funny, but a sad situation, but anyway. That's all I have to add.
So Thursday, I attended Lakewood United and heard somebody, city manager, give an excellent presentation on the state of Lakewood.
I saw that in Facebook, too.
Yeah, he he did a real good job, and it was much appreciated, and it got a lot of information into a relatively short period of time. The Puget Sound, I am a relatively new member of the Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board, and as a trans the Pierce County Transit Rep. That was a, even if I don't show up for the meetings, the people who supported me thought it was better than the person who I'm replacing. However, Mayor Quartz, DuPont, who is has been active on that board, had talked with the chair, who is, I guess, the mayor of Paulsboro, trying to get our a discussion of our resolution and their resolution. Now, Tillicum's resolution, that everything should be fixed about Amtrak before it goes back on the tracks. And I sensed staff resistance. So my quartz letter went out, I jumped on it, said the same thing. There doesn't seem to be any bylaw with respect to how you get anything on the on the agenda. But the, you know, that's things so staff-driven that I I said this is important to Lakewood, just like it was important to to DuPont. Plus, though they can't voice it, there are fifty-five thousand people who go to work on JBLM every day, and this is part of their safety and security there, and we tend to carry the torch for them sometimes, so we really need to have this on the agenda. The ulterior motive on that is actually to shift some of the discussion southward as to making it community-driven instead of staff-driven, what we in the South sound think is important and we want to be heard. So the county's exec is still, I guess, taking advice as to what the most powerful angle he can take is. You know, he can go and talk to the Sound Transit CEO, and that's in private, and that's like talking to a wall. Nothing happens on that. He can have a resolution. Does a does a resolution coming from council add a lot to that equation? But we'll see what comes of the the agenda setting here. Maybe we can move it forward. And this morning, I participated in a conference call of the Association of Defense Communities' Federal Advocacy and Outreach Committee, basically the lobbying legislative committee. And the word is that currently, with reset back to the DCEP program, a road son of commute, there is no no new language. The Senate, some senators had indicated they're confident there will be, quote, "some money", end quote, and that it will be specified for DCEP, that that will be amended in. However, one member of the committee had spoke with Senator Shelby, very senior Republican senator from Alabama, at the Paris Air Show, who indicated that the caucus was very frustrated with the White House, with this continuing resolution threat of one-year CR, and depended they didn't know what they were going to mark up yet. Was it going to be seven hundred and fifty million, seven hundred and thirty-five million, or some other number? And if it goes to the lower end, there will be no money for anything like this. So that's the risk. One of the other things that didn't happen was that with respect to the IGRA program, the the sole sourcing with the communities, the association had advocated to move the what had been five and is now ten-year limit on the time of or the duration of those agreements to twenty years. That got nowhere. Our Congressman Heck is going to emphasize that that should be done by offering and pulling an amendment on the floor. So the amendments at this point really go nowhere, there are four hundred of them or something. But you go stand on the floor and offer that amendment, you have a colloquy, and then says he withdraws it, and at least it's kept in the eye of the powers that be. So that's the latest on DCEP. Anything further? Word, John.